Okay, good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. Looking at our agenda for this evening. There are no items marked by staff on page one for discussion. Are there any questions by council members on any item on page one? Okay. Page two. A five is not marked. And then we go to eight, a six, which is a motion to change the date of the December 23rd meeting. Which staff members discussing this?
I will. We're just requesting to combine the work session and regular session and have both on Tuesday, December 21st. Since City Hall will be closed on that Thursday for the holiday.
That sounds pretty straightforward. Are there any questions on that or? Any council comments or? Feelings, one way or another?
It seems logical.
Okay. All right, then we will move on. A seven through eight 10 are not marked for discussion. Any questions on those?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a question on eight 10.
Go ahead.
I note this is a second violations for Casey's at this, at this location. Does that suspension of sales include? All beer, all wine, all spirits that might be at that location?
Yeah, it does. This is Chief Kids Muller. It's a complete. Suspension of all sales.
Okay, and that's a, that's a suspension for 30 days, I think it said, which on a second seems to be, I guess. Appropriate. It sends a strong message.
Yes, on top of the fine.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other? Questions or clarifications on that item or, or anything on a seven through a 10? Okay, moving on to a 11.
Hi, that'll be me, actually. So. Hi, so yeah, this is the first time I presented in council. So for those that don't know me, my name's Lucas. I'm the HR manager here. So. So yeah, we're talking about the purchase of Bamboo HR. This is in relation to item A11 on the consent agenda. So right now in human resources, everything is currently manual. When you think of that, think paper, physical files, it's all very tactical and administrative work. What we're doing currently certainly is not scalable and ultimately will hinder growing organizations. And so. That's kind of what started our search for an HR system. And so just for. HR system is a human resources information systems. And what that is, is basically the, the structure that human resources operates out of. It ranges from all across the board. It's kind of an all encompassing tool for HR to utilize. In everyday, you know, on the operational side as well as more that strategic side. So, you know, Kirsten and I were talking, you know, we assess, we're assessing current needs and obviously, you know, per this said and item, we wanted to move forward. And so it also fit into the strategic plan on items 2.2 and 2.3. And so by making this move, this will help automate and help go paperless and, and have that scalability. Moving forward with as many employees as will be onboarding, right? And so after we reached out to five different vendors. We demoed each, each vendor system, got proposals. And after all said and done, we, we wanted to go with the MBU HR, which was the most cost effective for, for the city of Marion. Of course, we took a look at New World, but the reality is, is that it's not necessarily a true HR system. So when we did the demo, it doesn't have an applicant tracking system, which is pretty significant. That generates a lot of work for, for Kirsten and I. Again, more of, you know, we received the application, we scan it, we then drop in the folder, you know, it's, it's just, it's super tactical, right? And so not having an applicant track system adds a lot of work. And so a lot of work that we can help mitigate, especially when we consider. The volumes that we're talking. And then secondly, New World also didn't have a performance management system. And so again, working with the process that we have currently. It's super manual and doesn't really allow for us to. Help with those employee valuations that what we want to see moving forward. And so. You know, we still went through the demos with New World, even the New World rep even mentioned that maybe New World wasn't the best fit. For what our current needs were, what we were looking for. In our department, so. So I wanted to highlight the key features. So the first one, as I mentioned earlier, applicant tracking system. And so. Going back to that, that the manual process, you know, we get an application, we scan it in, set it off to the hiring manager, and then we spend. You know, a week talking and making sure that the job description is up to date and everything, you know, making sure that we're still in compliance. And then. So this will help mitigate all of that. And so. The, the, this applicant track system, this ATS. Will help streamline a lot of these processes for HR along with not only the hiring manager, but then the candidate as well. And so, which will get kind of, the candidate is more kind of that onboarding experience, but it'll take our application system and really make it a virtual. Applicant system versus a paper copy to fill out. And so what this ATS will do, it has. A built out reporting system, you know, as you see there, it's EO, different demographics. Another awesome feature for the ATS will be the job board integration. So not only will it post to the city website automatically, it'll also post it to five other different job boards at no additional cost. Which that'll really help mitigate time going into the process as well as. Get, you know, get our post out there and get it in front of faces and, and have a lot of eyes look at it. So that'll help really drive. Some of the recruiting challenges that we are seeing, not only for to see mayor, but just across the board. Recruiting is super hard right now. It is definitely a, an applicant job field, so. And then, you know, the, it also mentions, there's a mobile app. The mobile app does work with the applicant tracking system, but I do have to mention it is, the mobile app is really cool and it does expand. Across the entire organization, across a lot of the different functions. And so again, this, in regards to the ATS, this will help us communicate with the hiring manager. The, the hiring manager, HR and candidate can see where we're at in the process at all times. They can log on, they can see kind of the status. You know, for the candidate, they'll see whether it's being reviewed, you know, next steps, that kind of thing. So it's, it really helps with the communication. And then, as I mentioned, the mobile app expands past the applicant tracking system in a lot of different ways of. Whether, you know, seeing, you know, their pay, their, like their general employee profile, if you will. So it highlights on a lot of different areas that we can also tap into with that mobile app. Um, the next key feature that I want to talk about is the performance management solution. This will help, this will help, excuse me, the bamboo HR system has completely full and automated performance management. Module. And so this will really help enable us to build out these processes that we want to see and, and have it be. The best fit the city's needs and interests as far as, you know, how do we want to, how do we want to do the performance management? Do we want to do, you know, a scale? Do we want to do this? This enables us to really customize what we want for our experience. So that, that, that's, it's a really cool feature that we have that we don't have right now. Everything that we have right now is, you know, when it comes around to review time, Kirsten and I get two paper copies, two paper forms. Per employee, one for the self evaluation, one for the manager evaluation. So there's a, there's a lot of paper floating around. And again, it's just, it's not so much the paper. I mean, it is, but a lot of it is just the time to go into it, the organization. The administrative tasks of, you know, keeping tally of who all were missing, who all were not. Whereas the system, we can pull a report or we can view the screen that'll show kind of a, you know, who's it, who's it lying with? Is it lying with the managers, lying with the employee? So we can kind of see those status updates as well as then integrate the performance management into, you know, their salary. If, you know, depending on whatever method that we have for the performance management, right? So again, it just allows us that flexibility and those capabilities to help. Really address what the city wants and our needs. And then as far as benefits and asset tracking, this is. Again, a really good portal to, for employees to log in, see what they're getting for benefits and see what they have. You know, assets wise, what's, what's attached to them, what's not. This will help onboarding, offboarding, just to help keep track of who has what phone, who has what fab, you know, just kind of those basic things that. Is easily, that can be easily fall through the cracks if, if you're not really thinking about it, right? And then onboarding and offboarding, it, I wanted to mention this, this will help us out quite a bit by, if we, you know, once we have a candidate that we want to hire. We'll check higher and then it'll pick off tasks to both IT, anyone we want, right? So if anyone's involved in the onboarding process, it'll kick off tasks. To different people and we can kind of keep track to make sure, make sure that everything's getting done to help enable, you know, have the best candidate experience. So, and same with offboarding, you know, what tasks are associated with what department, you know, does IT need to deactivate something? Do I need to do an exit interview? It'll have that workflow automated so that we will remember each time that, you know, something gets done and helps, you know, make sure it's a smooth process. So the next slide is just kind of a overview of all the current customers that. Just some highlight of some of the customers that Bamboo serves. And so. In addition, so I know that a lot of these are kind of big companies, but they range from, you know, smaller companies to a good sized medium organization. So for an example, they also serve City of Firestone in Colorado with a population of 14,000. Again, this is just to kind of show the diverse workforce that they, that they serve, right? You know, every, every organization has, you know, kind of their niche requests, right? You know, maybe we accrue time differently, maybe we offer a random benefit that others don't. Bamboo has the capabilities of really catering to our needs to help, help us grow as an organization. And then our next, our next slide, I will hand it over for Tarot or no, it's, it's, sorry, I'm a slide ahead. These are just a few facts about the HR system and. Just in general, and so, you know, a company with eight employees can save up to 10,000 using an applicant tracking system. You know, the 60% of midsize companies, that's not even to mention small companies. Use an ATS, you know, currently we're not using that and we can really tap into that data, you know, whether it's EO reporting. Or the demographics and see who's applying to Mary and see what areas we need to work on to help us grow, grow out what our goals and our vision is for the city. And then another fact that we, you know, on average, it costs about $3,500 for the hiring process. I mean. That's pretty substantial. When you're talking about 25 new hires that we had last year. We're at that number currently and we still have three months or two months to go. And so, you know, by having an ATS will really be able to cut a lot of these costs to help show that return on investment, so. And then recruiter box is just kind of where we cited all these, all these, all this information, so. And then the next slide, I'm going to actually hand off to Terrell for the privacy, security and compliance portion.
Thank you, Lucas. So some of the details that I take a look at here were assigned, I had to sign up on a non disclosure statement to get access to a lot of their information. But I did put together a couple of slides of what I can share about their infrastructure related to privacy, security and compliance. This, it is a software as a service, so it's cloud hosted. It's posted in two different data centers across the United States. We'll stay in the United States. And they're geographically separated. One is a primary, one is a secondary site. And I reviewed all of their documentation for controls for both physical and technical and it's, it's pretty complete and documented. I was pretty impressed with that. I also took a look at their business continuity plan as well as their disaster recovery plans. And their business that I just kind of really quickly went through the, the executive summary of the business continuity plan today. And it's, it's, it's pretty good. And then for privacy, the EU, the GD. PR is one of the higher standards right now out there for privacy. We really don't need to meet that, but it's kind of good to know that they meet one of the highest ones. I'm sure they do business internationally. So that's why they meet that one. And then for HIPAA, that one is met through a combination of their controls that they provide through their software and how we implement them. So they don't. They don't attest to an HIPAA certification, but they do provide all the controls as long as we implement them correctly. And then for compliances, they do, they are audited annually by a third party for the SOC two type one compliance. I read through that 91 page document today and that looked very good. And then for security, they also meet the ISO 27001 standardization for that one. As well as PCID SS for payment card security. And I did go through pretty thoroughly on their written information, security policies. And they are pretty, really, really, I was kind of impressed with how much detail they actually provided me. A lot of companies don't want to give you that much and share that. So it was really good. And they do do pen testing. The last one was done in 2020. And there was a lot of details in that document that I can't share publicly, but I can tell you that, that it was, it was a good outcome. And then if you want more detailed information that what is available publicly, I did provide a couple of links there on their, both their privacy policy as well as their data processing agreement. That's all I have for slides. I think we're ready for.
Okay, so I see that Randy has a question and then Grant after Randy. Go ahead, please.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. I had just, it's a two part question. One is. We have identified the annual or the one time purchase fee. It looks like there's an implementation cost. Will there be any type of support fees and annual? Re-occurring expenses on this and then associated with that same question is, is this a budgeted item? And then the second part to this may go back to Lucas. Is this, will this allow integration between? The departments with the bargaining units and the information that needs to be overlaid on those?
So with the first part of your question, there is a one time implementation fee. And so we actually expect. So hang on, let me, let me address the first part. Customer service is actually included in the cost. And so. With the package that we have, we both have email and call support at no additional cost, or at least the cost is included in what we're paying currently. And if I remember right, I'll have to double check this fact, but I think it's 24/7 access or support. And so. It's, that's, that's taken care of. The implementation cost, so actually since I submitted this, I wanted to play it. Loosely, so these are high estimates. For the first year, our implementation cost is actually going to be. 2606, that's point 63. So we got a little bit of a deal on it. And so it's going to be a little bit lower, but the estimated annual cost, just to kind of showcase how we got there. So it's per employee by per employee per month, right? And so we have. Around, let's just say eight months during like a lower peak, right? And then you hit that higher peak, once you start having park seasonals in the middle, right? Or, or, you know, other seasonals that we may have. So during the hybrid because, or we're going to be charged a little bit higher amount. And so where we got the, you know, 25 to $26,000 range is by taking just. This low range and did a ratio of 66% and then the high range at 33%. And so it, it would be next to impossible to exact, guess an exact number. But we're estimating or we're expecting somewhere around the 25 to $26,000 range. And then to answer your second part, this is not budgeted. And after talking.
Oh, Lucas, I can answer that. So what happened is Lucas brought in a proposal for the software. The software committee met and reviewed the proposal. It checked all the boxes. It's, it's aligning real well with our strategic. Plan of centralizing core functions and then streamlining our processes. We did, we did build in in CIP contingency fund, which is a 5% of our CIP. That is comprised of interesting capital projects. And, and reserve money. So we are able to accommodate this purchase because we're excited about it. And we can really wait. It's going to be an awesome. An awesome addition to our core package of softwares. So we're fine in terms of budget. It's built in the contingency and CIP and it will come from reserve and general fund.
And then Randy, can you repeat your second question regarding the unions? I can talk to it, but I don't remember exactly. Can you repeat your question?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I know that all the departments are using different platforms for their, their scheduling, their comp times, things of that nature. What I was wanting to know is if the system would integrate. With the bargaining units, because those do operate sometimes on different platforms. I was just looking to see. If this is going to be a robust enough system to capture those sidelines as well.
So that's a great question. And so currently this current package, we do not include payroll or timekeeping. For actually that very reason. This. We have, the HR has a lot of current needs that we need right now, and then this will help enable us to get there. Bamboo HR does offer other timekeeping systems as well as a payroll system to help integrate even further. And so there are options out there. However, at this point, Bamboo HR will not affect anything with execute time, contact, you know, any of. The timekeeping rules that's still going to be housed under execute time. And so that, that's not being touched at all at this point. There are, as I mentioned, there are other options that Boombo offers, but for the sake of time and kind of needs. We wanted to move forward with the HR portion, not to mention if we did cut over. Right now with payroll and executive time, we would still have to pay our current contract out. And so then we would ultimately pay more money. And so. By waiting a little bit, it was kind of, it was just a little more cost effective. To kind of do in two waves or at least this first wave and then evaluate to see the second wave to see if it's. If the second portion can meet our needs at that point in time during like stage two, if you will.
So basically, this is taking a completely manual process and streamlining it. So we're adding a new value that is not available in our existing systems.
Actually, it's automating several processes. It would be fantastic, Randy, to your point. I think you're thinking this way to have one solution for all of these things. Amal can speak to this better than I can, but when they were partnering with New World, they said multiple times, and I can tell you this from where I sit. We have one of the most dynamic workforces I have ever seen. So to, aside from building it out ourselves. Which we don't have the time or the resources to do. There is no real HRIS system that you could purchase off the shelf. That in and of itself would answer all of those needs. So, so Bamboo HR is by far the most bang for its buck. When I left my previous employer, I went through a very similar process evaluating a bunch of these HRIS tools. Then it was the most bang for its buck. And now that I've seen the, the features that they've added, the product enhancements that they've added over the past 12 months, I'm really impressed. That with what we are getting. For this, so it's an instant savings immediately. So again, I, I get, I would personally love one solution to do everything. I just don't know that that product exists for our workforce.
No, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that, Lucas. I appreciate your, your feedback, your presentation on this. I'm all for this. I know this is a. Huge step forward in your department there and we all appreciate the time and labor that goes into calculating our time and labor. So. Again, this is just another tool to our software platform. So thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Lucas, first off, I just want to say, I think your contemplation of this system is going to. Be an exceptional benefit. I know from what I've been able to observe, the whole performance management. You know, the review process, all of that is, as we currently have it is, I think the technical term is clunky. So I really appreciate the fact that, that you all are going after this. I also want to congratulate you in that you queued Tarot up on the questions that were probably in my mind. And Tarot did an excellent job of reading what was between my ears. So. All I feel bad about is, is that this takes a little bit of sport away from me if he is. Technical system that we buy. I might have to figure out a new set of questions to confound everybody. But there is one that's hanging out there. And Tarot, if you're still tuned in on this, maybe you're, based on the review you've done of the materials, they let you see. Did they give you any indication of their? Data. Data duplication and data recovery capabilities. And the only reason why I'm asking that is, this is going to be a whole bunch of information about our people. And we have to have absolute confidence that it can be recovered forthwith. So I'm interested in your comments.
Yeah, they did. I asked for their return to operation and recovery point objectives. And they didn't actually have those documented. However, they did say that. They back up across the US to their secondary data center nightly, and they've actually never had an instance where they had to recover because they're, they've been that good at, at the front end of everything. So that, yes, they didn't have, true, they did not have that where they had it documented. What's our recovery point? But at the same time, they were, they were pretty, pretty upfront about how, you know, we haven't had a problem. And I hope they were knocking on wood because they also haven't had ransomware, data breaches either. So. Yeah, and they, and their security team, when I asked that with their account rep, their security, he got with their security team and they got back within like minutes today when I had some questions, some follow up. So I was pretty impressed with that. We, you know, the response time on that.
You may know this and may not be able to answer it since you've been sworn to see technical secrecy. This is my last. This is my last question, Your Honor. But are they using AWS?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll just add, if I may, Grant, you bring up a really good point about confidentiality. If this council recalls the performance review process for lawn. And all the paperwork we had. When that paperwork is, is lying around, it, it is risky from a confidentiality standpoint. So, so long as that backend data is secure within their solution, this greatly. Improves our ability to keep things confidential as we need to, so. I know Lucas was speaking really fast. There's a whole lot of information. That we wanted to cover and try and get in this, in this presentation to present the solution, but. At the end of the day, this will save time. It will save money and it will allow us to move from that tactical performance on the day to day to moving into more strategic initiatives like employee retention and engagement.
Yep. Can I add one more thing? About this software, it's, it's going to be slick. And it also, it's going to help us with, it, it's going to reflect good on us as a city. And for the employee environment. It, it's going to help with the work we are doing on the culture.
Great. Any other questions by council? I have to say, you know. It's, it's. It's obvious, it's obvious that, that this is so important. You're all speaking with such zeal about it. And it seems like a very comprehensive. Tool that is going to be very helpful to us and I, I appreciate the anticipation of the questions and. Anticipating the questions about budget and, and how it's going to be paid for and, and the comprehensive. Description and explanation. So good job, everyone. Lucas, for your first time presenting, council, you get an A.
Hey, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, if there's nothing further about this topic, we will move on. To a, a twelve.
This is me, Your Honor. Along the same lines, speaking of centralizing core functions. The G I S position used to be under the police department. That we are centralizing to support all city operations. The goal is more G I S integration, centralized management. In support of our policy development and operations. And also, of course, reporting in terms of dashboards and maps on, to the public. So we all seen how critical a centralized G I S is. For disaster response and recovery when the rate should hit. So we're updating the job description just to reflect the new expectations for the role. So we're bringing a position that used to be under a department. Where we're bringing it under city manager for a centralized role. All towards centralizing core functions. For just the overall organizational performance and streamlined processing. And then using the data to help decision making.
Okay. Questions on this topic? Eight, twelve. All right, it's like we have. No questions. It's pretty straightforward. All right, we'll move on with the rest of page two. There are no items that are marked. For discussion under B and C. Are there any questions on those? Okay, page three, under engineering. And page four, page three and four, there are no items marked for discussion. Any questions on any of those particular items? Okay, moving on to page, pages five and six. Any items? For discussion on those? Okay. We're on page seven now, which is C one at the top of the page is marked for discussion by staff. Regarding fire prevention code, is that Chief Crable?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess maybe we shouldn't have started this actually, because it is going to be a public hearing on Thursday. So we will probably just go over this again for the public hearing and proceed with that at that time.
Okay, so you have no, no presentation on that tonight?
No.
The ordinance will be just presented. But we'll be voting on it on Thursday, correct?
Correct. And you received all the information last. Your last council meeting.
So this is nothing new?
Blue Hardy, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so is that clear to everyone? There's nothing new to add. We're just, from what we've been presented. We're going to have the public hearing and vote for the first, for the initial consideration on Thursday. Any questions or input? All right. Oh, was there someone? Okay, we'll move on to engineering. Mike, you want?
Yes, Your Honor, so this is just the contract and bond for Boomerang Corporation. This is for the South Thirty First and Highway One Hundred traffic signals. So just a reminder, this was over the engineer's estimate. But we have half a million dollars from the T SIP grant. And then that remaining portion is split between us and Lynn County because it is a joint jurisdiction intersection. So this is just approving it and then it has a late start date of June sixth of twenty twenty two. So it gives them that lead time to order the signals.
Okay, I apologize for the train going by my office. Any, any questions on this? And I think we've, we've had this presented to us also before, so any, any questions or comments? All right, E two, Mike?
Yeah, E two is a petition that was requesting no parking on Fifteenth Street next to the Marion Homeschool Assistance Program. So this will be referred to attack and then a report will come back to City Council with a recommendation for council to take action.
Okay. Any questions on that, Adam? E three.
E three, so those of you that don't recall, through the imaginary process, Creekside Pride was one of the projects that came forward from that. As part of that, they did apply and there's a lot of information in your council memo, so I won't go through all those. But there is a grant opportunity through the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization. From that, we went out and solicited engineering firms. The one that was selected came up with a contract for sixty thousand. The MPO grant was for forty thousand, so the city of Marion needs to come up for the remaining twenty thousand. So this is basically a twenty eight E. Where city of Cedar Rapids is going to pay the full sixty. And then be reimbursed forty thousand from MPO and twenty thousand from the city of Marion. From this plan, then we'll have a document that we can move forward with. To look at Indian Creek and what are the possibilities that we can do with this? So that we've already done a, a couple floats down Indian Creek when we had high enough water and it wasn't so dry. To look at different opportunities with the consultants already, so they've been working on this. So I would be open for any questions. Councilman Brandt has been on the committee. Meeting more often and then obviously the, the Water Department. Todd Sagerwalt has been involved a lot as well. So now that we're starting to get into more of the actual documents, I have started to get more involved.
So Mike, does this? Involve, is it just Indian Creek and Marion, or is it all of Indian Creek, like, you know, in the, in the entire metro?
This is only Indian Creek within Marion.
Within Marion, okay. So what's? What Cedar Rapids is interested in, in paying them, you know, funding that, that expense and then getting reimbursed? Is it just the way the MPO works?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just because the. The MPO is housed in the city of Cedar Rapids and so that national forest.
Okay. Okay, questions for Mike? Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, actually, just to comment, Your Honor. If I remember the evolution of this as it went through the MPO. At the Executive Committee and then I think again at the Policy Committee and Randy may recall that discussion, but. This particular project as well as several others were vying for a finite. Finite level of funding or available dollars. And I would just say that the arrangement of where we are picking up twenty thousand dollars. What was decided at that time was it was better to partially fund a couple of projects. And have perhaps slightly greater local participation so that what we do is we can move multiple projects down the road in a, in a beneficial manner. So I just wanted to let my colleagues know that. This, this was one of those kind of cooperative outcomes in order to have greater benefit across the, across the corridor on projects that. Were needing to move forward. So I, at least from my viewpoint, I thought it was, it was a good evolution.
Okay, thanks, Grant. Any other questions on this? I think it's exciting to think about the potential of the creek becoming an amenity. And something that people can enjoy more. So I, it's a. It's a really. Exciting process. It's just to think about the potential. Of developing the uses of that creek into, into more recreational uses for the community. So good job, everyone. That's helping to make that happen. If there's no more questions on this item for Mike, we will move on to community development. F one is marked for discussion by staff. And who is leading us through that discussion?
That would be me, Your Honor.
Hi, Nicole.
So Ridge Development LLC is seeking approval of a preliminary and final site development plan for a two unit multi-tenant building within the East Town Crossing Development. So that's the northeast corner of Highway thirteen and one fifty one. The lot sits next to the existing Pizza Ranch, Jersey Mike's, Pancharo's multi-tenant building. So the zoning was put in place in twenty seventeen as planned development special along with a thirteen and one fifty one development design guidelines. Which are there to help kind of guide this development through aesthetics and qualities that help provide that cohesive. Terrell, can you go back one slide? Thanks. Provide cohesive overall development. Within those design guidelines, pedestrian and vehicular connections internally are a big component of making this development work seamlessly. So lot four here on the screen is where this new two unit multi-tenant building will be placed. As you can see, on the kind of eastern edge of the lot, that can, has provided a north south connection. Up to the mixed use building that's a part of the apartment complex that they're doing, which will house. The Mac Express along with some residential, so that helps provide that north south pedestrian connection between those apartments. And then down into these multi-tenant areas. Along with the connections being made. The parking lot that was constructed in twenty twenty, that's, it's just on the north side of this building. It does have east west connections, so. The drive aisles connect to the parking lot that. Provides parking for the Pancharo's Pizza Ranch site as long as providing access for future development to the east. On the south side of the building, there is an option for a drive through. So I should say the west side would have the drive through order menu board. Allowing for three people to stack from that order board back. And then the pickup window is on the southwest corner of the building, allowing three cars to be stacked from that pickup window back to the order board. The applicant does not have a designated tenant for this spot yet. They would like to see some sort of sandwich shop, maybe a coffee shop put into this. Half of the building. Without knowing the exact tenant. A three and three stacking lane. Staff can all get and go, it seems sufficient. They would if a higher user comes in would back up into their own parking area and not into the private roads. But depending on the specific user. Three and three could be just fine or. It might not be so with this one, unlike Smoothie King or like a Starbucks where we would know who's coming in. This one is a little harder to say if this will work, but looking at it from a higher level. They did move that pickup window around the corner to the south of the building. Originally, they had it proposed up where that order board is. So they did kind of follow staff's recommendation of allowing for more stacking than what was originally submitted. So staff was appreciative of that. For parking, this entire development does have an agreed. Parking. Plan for it. This building, the parking lot on the north side has forty seven stalls. Eight stalls would be constructed on the south portion of the building, more so for the employee parking. And then they also plan to add about twenty stalls to the east, which would be lot five technically. And this does total seventy five stalls with this building. Looking at our standard parking regulations, if it was straight zoning for two restaurants in a building this size, we would require sixty eight parking stalls. So with that shared parking agreement, they're over what our standard parking regulations have and they are adding to that overall. Parking total to help the development. They're also providing some bicycle parking on the east side of the building. There got a partial covered patio and that bicycle parking would be on the north side of that. As far as the elevations go, Terrell, next slide, please. Elevations illustrate a contemporary style as indicated within those thirteen and one fifty one design guidelines. It also emulates the building, that multi-tenant building to the west. It's got a similar kind of form along with color scheme with that red, blue, and then that more natural wood or tan color. There, they are showing some brick veneer on portions of the building for accents. And then on that partially covered patio, they are showing a galvanized ribbed metal panel system. The primary material of the glass and fiber cement board in the three colors does align with those design guidelines. However, this galvanized rib panel system does not. Staff is kind of assuming that the prospective tenant that the applicant has. That this is more of a branding thing for that tenant. As far as the signage goes, as you can see, it's just kind of generalized signage, but showing individual affixed letters does match in with those design guidelines as well. And then once the tenants kind of come in, they will submit for internal review, a sign permit. This did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Last month, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of both the preliminary and final site development plan for this two unit multi-tenant building. Along with that additional parking on lot five. Questions of staff?
Thank you. I see Renee has a question. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can you go back, Terrell, to the first slide associated with this? Thank you. So it's the stacking thing again. If there are more than three cars on the west part of the building, what's the fee? Do they start wrapping to the north and through the parking lot? Is that the plan?
Um, this is what they're showing us is just, yeah, three from that pickup window on the south side and then three from the order board.
So, so let's say there are six from the order board. Where are the second three going to go into the parking lot?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so with this project and how they originally had the drive-through proposed with the order board being in that kind of landscape barrier, just on the north side of that pedestrian crosswalk, it's a very similar setup as Jimmy John's across from Target. So over lunch, I did go sit and kind of watch how that functioned. Granted, that is Jimmy John's and they're freaky fast. But when I did watch, can the line kind of back up, there were some customers of theirs that kind of parked and waited alongside the landscape barrier and didn't block those drive aisles. And then in some cases, when the line moved up, some customers did block that drive aisle going north and south. They aren't showing on here which way it would go. They don't have painted arrows for this. I would say that depending on the user, they may or may not have an issue, and customers are going to funnel through the parking lot as they see the easiest, least resistant path.
Right. Let me just stop you there. That's what I don't want. I want it to be controlled and intentional while we're looking at it at this point. I feel like, you know, the Starbucks, the new one on First and 14th, the one at Westdale, the issue we had with Dunkin', and then the recent Smoothie King. And this is, my, my frustration isn't with staff, obviously. I'm sorry, my tone sounds like it, but I just feel like people keep coming with these projects and they build it and then they leave. And I was in a Starbucks today that was backed out onto First Ave and Cedar Rapids. I mean, it's ridiculous. And then the cars that park on either side can't back out. So those spots are kind of wasted in essence. So I don't know what the solution is. But I, I just want to voice my concerns now at this point of the project, that I'd be curious what their plan is if there are 10 cars in the queue. I know we don't know who the client is, but I'd like to see their plan B for that, because the city is what, who is left with the complaints and, you know, the frustrations long after the project. So I don't know how anyone else feels, but I would, I would like to ask them for their, for their plan when there are multiple cars. If it's a higher use tenant that they bring in, what are they going to recommend? Thanks, Nicole.
And I can send an email to the applicant and make sure that they are in attendance on Thursday for the public hearing. And they might be able to get us something before that that can be sent out. Otherwise, they can hopefully address that on Thursday.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Did anyone bring that up at P&amp;Z? Was that a concern for P&amp;Z, Nicole?
One of the members did ask if, when a tenant was selected for that space, if they'd get a second review at the drive-through. And unfortunately, even though it is a planned development, we don't review again through this process when tenants move in and out. So it's just this first, first initial kind of look at it with the site plan. And it is hard when we don't know a tenant.
Right, but if that, if that question came up at P&amp;Z, I was just curious, was there any additional information provided by the, by the applicant as to how they would deal with that or?
It more so came down to they're gonna block their own customers with the parking and not ending up on Carlson Way, kind of like the Smoothie King would potentially go out into the roadway, whereas here they're like, well, it is just more that internal parking. So even though it was a question if they were able to re-review the drive-through with the tenant, they also kind of did it as well. It's the parking lot that they're affecting and they're not affecting that main thoroughfare of the road.
Might jump back in, Mayor, to ask.
Renee, let's let Colette go and then you can go. Yeah, no problem. No problem. Thank you. Go ahead, Colette.
Thank you. I'm trying to use the little raise the hand thing there.
I saw it, so.
Yep, great. I just had maybe a question and a comment. Totally agree about the stacking and how it is problematic. Is there, do we have anything when a developer wants to bring something to town that sort of says, here are the criteria around this idea of stacking? If we don't, does it make sense for us to start thinking about that? Because it seems like we continue to have these conversations, and I don't have the expertise, other than when it's built and it's done and it's causing a problem, sort of like, hold on, this isn't what we had in mind, but that's too late to make a change, I think, at that point in time. So sort of twofold. Do we have it? If we don't, does it, is it something we should be thinking about as we continue to move forward with our developers?
So we do have specific design standards for drive-throughs. It talks more about an escape lane. If it's a certain length, it talks about having a barrier between a drive aisle and your queuing lane and things like that. We don't have anything that specifically calls out how many vehicles need to be shown. It does say that they need to show their stacking lane and that that does need to be reviewed by planning and engineering. But it doesn't go into the detail of if you've got a 150-length queuing lane, these are the uses that would be allowed with that space. With this project, I did do some quick research on if I could find any standards out there, and I did find a few different communities that do go into those levels of detail. However, I wasn't feeling it, finding anything that I'd say too official or that had too much research to help back up some of those numbers, even though some of them did somewhat align with each other. With our code and our code updates with the overall citywide zoning, I do think this is something that we have talked about internally, is looking a little deeper into those standards for drive-throughs and that this would definitely be something that we would probably look at for expanding on.
I think that's helpful. I think, you know, if I were a developer, I'd want to know, right, what, what is it, the rules of the game a little bit? And it seems like this is something that's really important to us and Marion, rightfully so. So it might be helpful for us to have some criteria that allow us to be a little more objective than maybe Colette's perspective of like, oh, that seems like too many cars. We probably shouldn't do that. So thank you, Nicole, for answering my question.
Yeah, even with some of those standards, a coffee shop, like one of them, they've got 250 feet, which is about 13, 12, 13 cars. That might be fine for standard one, but again, a Starbucks, so it, it depends on not just the general use, but the specific user too can sway some of those numbers out of scale. But it's all something that, yeah, at least we would have a basis.
Okay, if I could also just make a statement. Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, but we also have some, some areas in the community where there, it's a conditional use permit for a drive-through. So we've got one that, that went to the zoning board of adjustment last night, I believe.
Correct, yep.
So that, that gets approved by the zoning board of adjustment. I, I do think we, if you recall, when we talked about the zoning, there was a lot of conversation about drive-throughs and where they should be allowed and where they shouldn't be allowed. And some of the, we didn't really get into the design standards. So I do think it'd be worth having those conversations a little more detail. I have found in a lot of the, the, oh, I'll say the major metropolitan areas that have a similar situation as, as, is out here, where we're talking about where there's residential components directly adjacent to and associated with the commercial components that drive-throughs on standalone parcels are generally accommodated, but those that are attached to multi-tenant buildings are not, just because of the, the conflicts that are created. Just recently in some travels, I noticed that. I'm not suggesting that that's the direction we need to go, but I, I just think that it's something that has changed a little bit in how commercial areas like this, where there's residential directly adjacent to it, have developed. So that's something I think we'll, we'll certainly take take a peek at it, and I think provide some more data to the council and planning commission as we talk about these things. Appreciate your guys' comments on.
If I may add, I think we, we tried to address that when we were talking about the need for design standards for sub-area plans. We did discuss that we need to do further planning for sub-areas and maybe come up with design standards that are specific for the areas. Would be, I think that would be the next phase of the planning.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll go back to Renee and then to Steve.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I really appreciate all of those comments. I like what Tom was saying about considerations for the future. You know, and thinking about where drive-throughs go, because as a city, we, we just have to have a philosophy, kind of to Colette's point. Everything else that we do, when we're talking about all the progressive things that we're doing in the city and our growth, we're future-proofing, and it just seems like we're not doing that in this particular area. You know, the pandemic has caused behavior changes that we've talked about in terms of deliveries and drive-throughs and convenience. And so, you know, it's, it's kind of a matter of timing. We really haven't been forced to have the conversations, but demand is kind of changing us. What I wouldn't want to do is build it for something that, you know, we're going to make the assumption it's small and it'll come in. But to Nicole's point, whatever we build has to last for any future tenant. And so we shouldn't, you know, cut off a potential bigger future client because we weren't thinking big in the first place. And then the second thing is, you know, to the developer who says, oh, well, maybe we'll just stack and those are our own customers. Those are our customers. As a city, there are business owners and people might start avoiding the area and the businesses if it's a hassle or if, you know, little fender benders start taking place. So I, I don't, I don't know if it's too late for, you know, I know we can still talk about this one and we're kind of in that spot zoning area by just looking at these one-on-one. So I like what Tom was saying and certainly Colette's in terms of kind of just branching, you know, kind of stepping back and coming up with some kind of policy or ordinance or guideline that can help drive these. Because it's, it seems like it's happening more and more, and as I mentioned, because of recent things in the worldwide that we're being impacted by. So thanks for that. I'm sure we'll discuss it more on Thursday, too.
Okay, Steve and then Will.
Yeah, real quick. Yeah, so I, I also agree with the other comments that we needed in our future discussions about policy on future development of drive-throughs. But on this particular one, Nicole, is there a timeline on when he wants to start construction? Are we aware of that?
Not that I am aware of.
Well, again, if, if they come to the meeting on Thursday, my comment would be this, is that if there's no immediate timeline for that and potentially if it's not going to start this fall, it's going to be the spring, I have no problem with the preliminary site development plan. But maybe there's some consideration or even thinking about a delay in the final site development plan. Maybe a little bit subject to him knowing what the tenant in this facility may be. He's not going to build it until the spring. That gives all of us plenty of time to work on a solution, know who the tenant is. Again, because six does not go very far in a lot of these drive-throughs anymore. So you're going to have, you know, three or four cars in the parking lot, and that's a real conundrum. I think, and not fair to all the other customers in that area. That's all.
Yeah. Okay, Will.
Well, I might be in the minority here, but I personally don't see an issue with this because it is backed up into the parking lot. You see this all over town during lunch hours or rush hours for drive-ups. I mean, I see it at Jimmy John's here in Marion all the time over lunch or dinner hours, but if it was backing on a road and potentially backing onto a road like Carlson Way, then I would have an issue with it. But with the just backing or stacking into the parking lot, I, I don't, because it is like you said, it's their customers. So it is, it's just the customers for these locations, and it's probably only going to be for a little bit of time during the day when it is busier for that lunch rush or dinner rush. But I, I agree that there could be something as far as looking into some type of regulations in the future for this, but kind of what Renee said, if you do build this and then it, you don't put in what you need for some other tenant to come in in the future, you gotta look into the opposite way, too. If you overbuild this for the current tenant and then they leave and some other tenant comes in, it doesn't need to be overbuilt for that tenant. It's continuous. You may not need it for the specific tenant that's there. I don't see where this would be an issue backing all the way out on the Carlson Way, so I don't think I have an issue with it.
Any other thoughts? Other questions? Yeah, I, I mean, my, my thought is, can it because I do agree that, you know, you have to approve this for you know, future tenants, and we don't know who they are. It's just the orientation of this building and where the drive-up is. Like, can it, can that be, you know, put on another, you know, relocated on the building, you know, so that it's, it allows for more stacking. You know, can, can the building be designed differently so that so that the ordering is on the backside, you know, and pick up and then relocate the outdoor seating? Or, you know, I don't know if that can be manipulated somehow, but it, it is a hard thing to be approving something, not knowing who the user is. And even if we do know the current user, we don't know what's going to be in the future. So let's go with Tom and then back to Will.
Yes, thank you. I, I was going to say that, and I believe it was Steve that said the preliminary, we could hold off on the final, that I mean, in all honesty, the development community hasn't really taken advantage of the fact that there's a preliminary and a final site development plan. Generally speaking, they do a preliminary and a final at the same time. This is a really good example of why you do a preliminary and you have a public hearing. The final is just a resolution. So, you know, some of the questions that may be asked relative to the drive-through would be, if you recall, when we did Smoothie King, there was a question about what the average stacking was for their, and they were able to provide that in their, in their, in their recommendation. So, you know, I'm not going to, I won't make any too scary of conclusions, but if you had a Starbucks and they came in and said, well, our average is eight, and then you had a Smoothie King that said our average is four, you know, that would, that would certainly be a something you'd want to accommodate in that final site development plan, when you know the tenant, to, to the marriage point, I think you can mention that, too. So I, I I mean, that's, I think that's a conversation the council should have with, with the developer on Thursday, by all means, because it literally take, I mean, it's going to take them longer to negotiate the agreement to a lease than it would be to bring it back through council, the way we operate, especially if they have a preliminary. They have a preliminary plan, it's very difficult to for the council to deny it if it's consistent with the preliminary, but you can certainly ask those questions. So I will, I won't belabor the issue, but I, I think that's a good conversation for the Thursday night. If the developers are. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Will?
I think this kind of goes with what Tom said, but if, if they, if they go to bill it this, this way, too, that is going to help determine what type of tenant does go in there, because kind of what Tom said, if a Starbucks needs eight and a Smoothie King's only four, well, a Starbucks is going to look at those locations and, nope, it doesn't work for us because we need eight. Or Smoothie King might look at it and say, yep, it worked for us. So I, I think that them billing this way is going to probably bring in a tenant that this design would work for. Do you would hope?
Okay. Tom, you, you, you still have the hand? Are you? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Nicole. That was a great presentation. All right. Then it's F4 is the next item. Annexation request?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kesha Billings here in the Planning Department. Wanted to talk through, in the attached memo for the agenda, is a letter from Integrity Custom Homes Kent Bakken requesting annexation of former county plat. And so looking at this, you see lot one and outlot A. Those were part of the county plat that he did in the county. Said he had to my overview of it, and at that time it was annex now or, or just kind of, you know, get the plat done in the county, split off the, the house from the other, other property that would be developed at a later date. This was done in March of this year, and at the time, the developer said, you know, yep, I can, I can hold off on this for probably another couple of years until we get a larger annexation, which I'll show it up in a later slide. But, so that was the thought. But so that was the thought of, of when this was done in the county. Terrell, if you would expand the next slide. And so what we've got here is we've just kind of got a little snapshot of the northern part of Marion and all of these pink areas are similar subdivisions that have been done. So I find him back in like the mid 90s as part of our two mile review of subdivisions that were done in the county. We started having these little paragraph sentences that say, at such time, the city requests you to annex into the city or at such time you could become adjacent to the city, you will voluntarily annex in. And so this would be one of those pieces. And so if you, if you kind of look at the northwest part of Marion, you can kind of see Dawn Drive, Albernett Road, you can kind of see this area. And, and Terrell, if you would advance to the next slide, they'll actually tell the story a little bit more. And so what we've got is we've got Cedar Rapids in the green and the green hatched area is an annexation that the City Council, I believe, a meeting or two ago, didn't contest. So it's a voluntary annexation into the city of Cedar Rapids. And so what this leaves us is that white area that is, is city jurisdiction still. And so there's, there's a 50-foot swath that's left in there. So it's not considered an island by state standards. But it's just kind of one of these areas that's just kind of looming out there, right? And so for us to do either 100% voluntary annexation or even an 80/20. In the instance, the 80/20 allows the city to take in 80% of the land area as voluntary and 20% as non-consenting. The state allows us to do that, to kind of take in some of those subdivisions that, that, you know, some of these have been done years prior residential subdivisions that don't want to annex in. They're on their own water and sewer. The state allows us to utilize that 80/20 and bring in non-consenting property owners and still could consider it voluntary. And so I think we've been, we've been waiting for like a decade for this area to figure out how, how we actually get property owners on board with annexing this area again. And this is a prime developable area, I feel like, with Territorious Road being connected in the next year or two. So for two or three years. But so what we have is the areas in pink, those are consenting annexations. And so those, you obviously see, this is not 80%, right? And so then we look to our options here. And so Kent has, Mr. Bachan has requested annexation. And so the first option would be to turn him down and say, that's a, that's 17 acres that we could use towards a voluntary annexation at a later date. Another option is to just do 100% voluntary of the area that he plotted, so consisting of the Lot 1 and Outlet A. Third option is what I have on the screen is that area in pink. And then there's a little pink hashed area alongside that. So that's a single-family residence off of Albernett Road. Wasn't a part of the subdivision he did earlier this year, but that is something that we could utilize. It wouldn't be a full 80/20, but it would clean up the boundaries and most likely lessen a potential non-consenting. We haven't talked to the property owner, maybe they'd be all on board with it. In that case, we have 100% voluntary annexation. The fourth option is an 80/20 in which we would extend the annexation down and maybe take in two more properties off of Dawn Drive. This, this would create the, the, this would make it a more uneven boundary line. So it's almost taking a step backwards, but it would be utilized in the 80/20 and most likely having less non-consenting owners at a later date. So like I said, the, the use of the 80/20 is to help clean up boundary lines, help us make full and complete annexations instead of having rough jagged edges or, or holdouts for, for decades. So staff's recommendation would be the, just to take in the requested area and then make this not quite an 80/20, but take in one non-consenting property owner for the sake of cleaning up the boundary lines. Potential non-consenting property owner, I should say. Any questions of staff?
I'm going to ask Mayor Potem to lead the discussion on this.
Right. Any questions? Go ahead, Grant.
Thank you. So Kesha, just as I'm looking at this, maybe just as an informational piece, that crosshatched candy cane section, you said that has one, one residence on it, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And, and I, I think my friends at Google Maps are showing it reasonably well. And then it appears there is one additional residence and an outbuilding on the main pink portion that exists and otherwise it's just field. So is, I guess the question really is, is what, any idea what the future development of the area would be in and around those existing residences?
So yeah, so that's, like I said, so the, the developer Integrity Custom Homes was, was planning to hold this for another couple of years. He said, you know, so I want to subdivide it in the county. So he split off that, that area and the full shaded pink, you know, split off the household that he had no interest in that and he was going to hold this vacant land for development at a later date. And, and he was comfortable with that. If anybody knows what's going on with the housing market right now, it's a, it's a little, it's a little quick going on right now. And so from the developer's perspective, he likes to have a range of houses. And so, you know, if you have a $200,000 mark or a $400,000 mark or, or more, you know, they, they like to develop in pockets. And I think that this was an opportunity with the way that the market was, he wanted to explore the potential to annex this in and kind of expand on his, on his areas of, of housing market.
Other questions? Oh, well, there we go, Kesha. Just one question. Perfect. Nice work. You did, of course. Okay, I will move the meeting back to the mayor.
I have a question or a comment.
Go ahead, Will.
It sounded to me like though you were looking for what direction you'd like council to go in, correct?
Yeah, actually I should have spoken up. I was so excited. There were no questions, but and, and like I said, there's, there's kind of four options.
Yeah.
Kind of a do-nothing approach and, and kind of say, sorry, we're, we're going to kind of hold you for a later date for your annexation, 100% voluntary. We don't want to have any non-consenting. Option number three was take in one parcel as a potential non-consenting. And we can discuss that at a later date. There's, even when we take them in, we can still provide the opportunity for, say, a 10-year transition on the taxes.
So I have question and my opinion. So first is the question. So what happens if that, the Dawn Drive development there, let's say, everything around them gets annexed and they are an island. Is there, is there something other than the, what would make, how would we able, be able to make them come into the city if they become an island with all, with city all the way around them?
The state wouldn't allow that.
Would not allow the island or would not allow?
You are not allowed to create islands and that's kind of why the state created the 80/20. Is so, okay, cities, get your stuff together, get 80%. Or years ago, we had done a long agreement with what we call kind of the North 10th Street annexation area, Williams Drive, Bruce Road, Erika. And that was kind of a lengthy agreement that kind of said, if and when they decide that they want sewer, then the city would, you know, so that was done with higher city manager and heavily involved with that. And so that's an option that we would have is to kind of negotiate an annexation in there. Or involuntary. And so involuntary is kind of like staff's like least favored option because it does take double or triple the amount of time at least to get an annexation complete. It does require a number of public hearings, even locally, they have them at the state and then there's like a whole separate committee that needs to be created locally. So it's involuntary is not ideal.
Has there been any talk with Douglas Quarterdon Drive, any of those folks about being annexed in anytime soon?
No, not.
Because that might be an option, too, is to talk to them and see if, if they're interested in or see what type of interest you get. Because if, if half of them are yes, then you've got integrity above them that says yes, then you might have your 80/20 right there to get it all done at once.
I, if that's the direction the council wants me to take is to pursue that. Given every other 80/20 that we have done, we have not gotten a vast amount of consenting property owners out of that. Essentially their taxes go up and they're already on their own water and they're already on their own sewer. And so there is, from past experiences, there is kind of a, what's in it for me type of
Right. And I've, I've never had an issue with doing the, like the 10-year, you know, like we talked about, like you just talked about doing something like that with it too. But that might be something in my mind that you look at potentially doing and just getting all that done at once. If not, I would say, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like the idea of just taking a couple of properties out of that with an 80/20. I would say just do the whole thing and see if that, and then see if that one, one candy cane striped property would like to come in voluntary or if you have to the 80/20 with the rest of Integrity's property. But I would start with just reaching out to that neighborhood and see if there's any interest. Then Tom's got his hand up, so maybe he knows the answer to that.
Go ahead, Tom. We can't hear you, Tom. You're muted.
Sorry about that. What, what someone had indicated, what was the development potential kind of around the area? Kesha, can you, can you, or I'm sorry, let's just take all the, the big squares. Those are quarter sections. Essentially, the, there's two quarter section, 80 acres west of Dawn Drive and Douglas Drive. And then there's, if you take the rest of the area south and east of that, it's under ownership by two property owners. The Klobek family has the stuff closest to the city. And Eesker has the 80 acres west. What we do from a perspective of trying to do the 80/20 is we try to maximize, what, what we try to do is avoid the annexations that would allow, that would get us in the position, it's almost like a big poker game here about trying to get enough properties that voluntarily, when they voluntarily annex, that we could take in the properties that would likely not be voluntarily annexed. Even at that point, we usually have a big public meeting and have conversations. They're not fun. I'll just be honest. We're, a lot of times the taxes are going up to the point where it's, it's difficult to express the benefit when you, when you talk about the increase in taxes that people are going to receive, especially if they have their own sewer and water. The, the biggest thing we can provide is a 10-year transition to taxes. But I, I, to, to your point, Will, I 100% agree. And no problem if you want to leave one end and, or just proceed with a voluntary, I totally get that. I think the conversation about annexation for that entire neighborhood would be best served when, when the larger pieces come in. But we can move in that direction if there's a desire. But you can imagine this is a pretty small annexation. You know, when we do the larger ones, I think that's when the real questions are going to come up in the future. But we, we can go in either direction. If you notice, and not to belabor the conversation, but if, if you notice here where it says Cedar Rapids and you see the section line and then you see the, 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 the green line is about, well, it's 50 foot off the section line. When Cedar Rapids annexed this property, they specifically left 50 foot between the points of connection between the city of Cedar Rapids and the city of Marion at that point where the gray meets the green to, to maintain that quote unquote out. So they did not create an island. Anybody else who looks at this map would, would not see that 50 foot because of the scale. But that's, that's what they have done. We've tried to avoid doing that. It just creates awkward pieces. And so I would fully expect for, for a long-range planning perspective, at the time the Klobek or the Eesker property comes in, that will probably come to the council and ask to include some, some, some of the 20%. But also talk about the potential of, of an agreement with the other folks just to get them to annex at the same time. So I don't know, I just, I just kind of rambled on a little bit, but there, there's a lot to the, these parcels and it really engages a great deal, a great number of people. And if there are concerns, it may be easier for us just to proceed with accepting the voluntary and treating everybody else the same when we, when we get a larger piece coming in and want to really make it a holistic conversation.
Thanks, Tom. Others, do you have some opinions to help Kesha and her team make a decision? Yes, Steve.
So Kesha, explain one more time for me. I'm not fully understanding the 80/20. Because you said one of the options is to so if they want to voluntarily do it, and I think the piece in the crosshatch, I remember that site is for sale, right? That's, that's an acreage with some outbuildings. So I think that's a nature. I thought that was for sale. I'm thinking of the right piece.
Is that one the one for sale? The outbuildings, I think it was more of like a horse farm. I, that one would be, that one would be part of the solid area, the hatched area.
That's part of the solid area. Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. So I'm thinking, okay, that's a different place.
There's a, yeah, there's a smaller house up closer to Albernett Road.
Okay, that's a different place. So the do-nothing versus the 80/20, maybe I'm not fully understanding 80/20 and why do-nothing is an option because if they want to come in and voluntarily annex, that typically seems like a valid option. So I'm not understanding the 80/20 on why that versus a do-nothing are options.
So the, the do-nothing approach is kind of said, you know, sorry, we, we would like to hold up this 17 acres to use that as a voluntary annexation at a later date. And so that's just kind of saying, sorry, we're, we're kind of holding up your development at this time. But that, then there's 100% voluntary where you only take in like the 17 acres that he had subdivided. And then there's the, the 80/20 would be taking, so 17 acres would be considered 80% of the annexation area. So you make up that other 20% with non-consenting. So say you had 100 acres total, 80 acres of that could be, or just over 80 acres of that could be consenting and you could bring in 20 acres non-consenting. So, so say a 20-acre single-family subdivision, you know, 20 single-family lots or something like that. So that allows you to bring them in when they, when they might not otherwise be a voluntary petition.
And in this case, that would be the hatched.
The hatch part, right. You could extend this further, right? This would be, this would be like a 90/10, you know, I mean, this is, this is the comparable is, is greater amount of voluntary compared to non-consenting. But this gives you the best boundary line, just kind of from a mapping perspective, gets you the cleanest cut right there. But like Tom said, if, if you just want to do voluntary right now, leave that out and have that discussion with that single-family lot at a later date with the rest of them, that's that's up to you. I just draw the lines.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have input for Kesha or questions? I would certainly, oh, go ahead, Grant.
I would, I guess I'm, I'm of the opinion to be responsive in, I guess, granting his request to be annexed in and in parallel for the residents and, and family that is in that candy cane crosshatch area. See if they can be included in, in this and so that you have a nice straight east-west boundary north of Dawn Drive. I'm, I'm going to make a supposition here and I might be completely illogical in doing so. But my thought is, is if that entire area was annexed in at this point in time, it undoubtedly will sort of set a signal for everybody on Dawn Drive, Douglas Drive, et cetera. You know, of what might be occurring in the future. And I don't know if that You know, of what might be occurring in the future. And I don't know if that would work in our favor or, you know, work against us at some point. But it at least establishes a, an awareness that the boundaries at some point will change in that area.
And when the property just to the west of the pink area of, of the current request, just to the west, the some property owners on Dawn Drive, I don't recall how far into Dawn Drive we notified, but they would have gotten notification of the annexation request for that area, which has now had a, I believe, a preliminary plat approved for it. And so they would have gotten notification again. So similar when this would go to be zoned, platted, they, they continue to get those notifications.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Kesha, I would, from my perspective, I'm, I think with where Grant was and what the, what your recommendation is, is to annex that piece in and make it one straight line. So you'd have the whatever seventeen acres and then that additional striped portion as a part of the annexation. So I, I would align my, I'm with the staff's recommendation on this one. Okay. If there's nothing, if there's nothing else, this time I'm passing it back to the mayor again, quick.
All right, thanks. Okay, our final item for discussion tonight before the closed session is the open option sales tax update. Just providing that. Okay, go ahead.
So, Your Honor, as we're getting ready for a statewide vote to decide on the fate of our local tax, Amber and I wanted to give you an update on our communications plan, starting with an overview of the tax, its impact. And what we're looking at in terms of community outreach. So the tax we have in place is actually a twenty thirteen renewal. It's a ten-year tax that will sunset by the end of the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four. It's a one percent tax and on average, we've been receiving the five million in proceeds annually. In terms of use of funds, we've been setting thirty percent of the proceeds to go towards community projects and seventy percent to go towards infrastructure projects. Terrell, next slide. So we're looking at a twenty twenty-one renewal vote. We want to encourage our community to go out and vote. This is going to be a ten-year tax. If passes, effective date would be, for tax collection would be July first of twenty twenty-four. So we still have two fiscal years left in our existing tax. And will sunset after ten years, still going to be a one percent tax. And we're estimating, in terms, in terms of collection, we're estimating to receive about seventy million in proceeds over the life of the tax. We're still going to go with thirty percent, seventy percent split. Council already approved that. And the reason is it's really working well for us. Next slide, Terrell. So depending on the vote outcome, there are four possible outcomes. Scenario one, tax pass, passes the Marion and passes in the metro. Taxes collected, we'll get our share. If passes in Marion and fails metrowide, tax will end by the fiscal year twenty-four. It fails in Marion, however, passes metrowide, the tax is still collected, including Marion. We'll still get our share. If it fails in Marion and fails metrowide, tax end by the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Next slide. So what impact does loss really have? I'm going to start with our property tax. Our property tax levy for the fiscal year twenty-two, the existing fiscal year is fourteen dollars and nineteen cents per thousand. Out of that, for, out of that rate, we have eight dollars and ten cents. That is our general services levy. And we're maxed at that levy. So this is the most flexible one. We have seventeen cents to go towards tort liability, that's insurance and legal. Twenty-six cents goes to transit, thirteen cents goes to civic center. Four cents library and three dollars and forty-five cents, that's employee benefits. And we have two, two dollars that goes towards our debt service. So where I'm going with that, if we just take a look at our streets, our streets are considered essential corporate purpose. And only monies we receive from the eight dollars and ten cents, that is, we already maxed on that levy can go towards streets. That would be whether operation or maintenance of our streets. So without local option sales tax, the only other sources of money that the city has for streets are going to be road use tax, which is not sufficient enough to cover both operations and capital of maintenance of our roadways. And the other option left we have is debt, and we all know that debt, it's going to end up being higher taxes because it adds to our tax levy. And for sewer infrastructure, it's the same deal. The funding sources available for us to maintain sanitary sewer infrastructure are either debt, general obligation debt, which will end up being debt service and add to our tax levy. And the other source would be the sanitary sewer rate, also will end up being higher utility. Higher utility bills for our residents. So just to put it, why is this important? To put it in perspective, for example, for this fiscal year twenty-two, we're estimating loss proceeds to be six million, six point four million. That's the equivalent of three dollars and fifty-five cents in levy rate. So if we are to levy that fund, that would be a twenty-four, twenty-five percent higher property taxes. Next slide. So if the tax passes, then I think we, we will all think it will pass. We, we will be still maintaining our thirty percent community, seventy percent infrastructure split. Will gain more than we collect because our estimates are saying that a third of the proceeds we receive in local option sales tax actually comes from outside Marion. We get to maintain our level of service because if that fund, if that fund goes away, we, we'll be faced with options, either drastically cut back on our capital outlay or level of service in terms of maintenance, or find another funding source to fill in the gap that loss is going to leave. Our prop, property taxes don't have to increase and we can maintain a lower sanitary sewer rate. Next slide. If it passes, we'll have the opportunity to complete our City Plaza project. And we'll be able to go along with our strategic plan and expand on opportunities for aquatics. And implement a Creekside Pride project, that's the project city engineer was talking about earlier, we're setting a plan for. I will be able to do more parks development and trails, trails improvement and will be able to add more fire department equipment. Those are just examples of community projects. Terms of infrastructure projects, we'll be able to complete the vision for the Seventh Avenue reconstruction. We'll be able to do more of streets improvements, whether there are a complete reconstruction in neighborhoods or HMA overlay or new streets construction. We're looking at the Albernet Road street and bridge project and 10th Street to Echo Hill connection. And also the Tower Terrace construction, that's a major, major street project. Last will be helping with getting that project done. And also we'll be able to do sanitary sewer infrastructure, infrastructure improvements to address capacity issues and why this is important because we're working on mitigating flooding and backup potential in our sewer. Next slide.
So in terms of our educational outreach, attached to the council memo was a communications plan that's been put together. Certainly we'll use our existing channels. We've already had some preliminary information included in the Marion Messenger. It's up on the website. We'll use our social media channels and other media distribution practices. We've ordered fifty yard signs that indicate, that say local option sales tax dollars at work. And the thought being that we would take these out and put them next to those high-profile projects that have been accomplished in the last ten years or better since the first run of the tax. Looking at putting together a direct mailing piece that would go to every resident, just explaining kind of the information that Amal has already covered today. Looking at purchasing two digital billboards or a digital billboard placement for two weeks. And then leaning on council a bit to help with some community presentations to help share this message of why it is so important to get out and vote on November second. But to help people understand how we've used these funds up to this point and what our plans are for the future. In this new age that we're in, the thought would be we could record something via Zoom as well. So the last time we were on the ballot, I think we did five or six community presentations and looking at maybe cutting that down, but making an electronic recording available as well. So that's kind of the high-level overview of what we have planned, certainly open to your comments or suggestions.
Any questions?
Mayor, I just have a. I think a quick question. Did I read somewhere that the local option sales tax, the average cost? Or I guess the cost for an average citizen is around three hundred dollars annually. Did I, did I see that somewhere?
Correct. Yeah, yes, that was in our talking points that we've assembled. For the average household, it costs about three hundred dollars per year.
Okay, so if my math, so, so that's good that I actually, see, I read something. I just want to put that out proof, right? Second, so quick math tells me, right, if we want to keep the same level of services that we have, we can either as a resident, I can pay about three hundred dollars a year or my tax levy could go up and I could pay seven hundred dollars a year, right? I mean, because I think you said it's what, about three dollars and fifty-five cents per thousand? And if an average home is around two hundred thousand dollars, feels like a good deal is all I'm saying. If my math is right, I can pay three hundred or I can pay seven hundred. I'm in on the three hundred, right?
Correct. It's a good deal because a third of it actually comes out from outside of Marion.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you for the presentation and we'll look forward to seeing how we can all help.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you to everyone this evening. Great meeting, good discussions. That brings us to the closed session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section twenty-one point five, section one J of the Code of Iowa.
Is, is there another part to that motion?
Oh, I read the one that's in my file. Let me, I'll let me reread it. I'll read the one on the screen. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J of the Code of Iowa and personnel matters. City manager appointment as permitted under twenty-one point five one I of the Code of Iowa, two separate measures.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J of the Code of Iowa and personnel matters as permitted under twenty-one point five one I of the Code of Iowa. And these are two separate measures. Before we go further, I would just like to ask the council to take up the first or the second item first, the personnel matters item first. And then allow me to leave the meeting for the land acquisition item. Okay? And do we have the council's, our, our legal council's statement?
Yes, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed sessions and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa code section twenty-one point five one I and twenty-one point five one J.
Okay, thank you for that. Any discussion or questions before we vote? Okay, Rachel, may we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abulosli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Goodelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're, we'll, we're now adjourned to closed session and we will return to open session upon completion. Thank you all.
Will you stay on the screen for this one?
No, there's another link.